Mr. Abu Dawud?
President.
Mrs. Columbo?
Here.
Mr. Gersmeyer?
Here.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Here.
Mr. Pontillo?
Here.
Mrs. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Sembler? Mr. Snee?
Here.
Dr. Romano? You have a quorum?
Salute, salute to the flag. Plagued allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Westwood Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be sent to the following announcing time and place thereof: Westwood Borough Hall, Westwood Public Library, Township of Washington Administration Building, Township of Washington Free Public Library, The Record Community Life, and Pasgak Press. Can we get a motion for minute approvals?
Make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no one, roll call.
Mr. Abu Dawud?
Yes.
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gersmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Superintendent's report, please.
I would like to start tonight's report by thanking the Township of Washington Police, Fire, and DPW Departments for their assistance in four situations involving our schools within the past week. The response time and communication with us was excellent, and we are grateful to them for helping us. We are actively working on Board Goal Number Four, which is an external safety and security audit. Representatives from Stonegate Associates met with the K-12 principals recently, and they are now in the process of conducting individual school site visits. They will present their findings to the board when they conclude their study. Tonight, the board is set to approve Policy 8110, which has been revised to reflect a change in practice in placing kindergarten students. Starting with the 22-23 school year, we will now use a flexible boundary approach instead of first come, first serve. For more information, please visit the student registration webpage on our district's site. Finally, tomorrow, the district will send an email that explains the new elementary health standards and provides sample lesson plans for parents, so be on the lookout for that. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Mortimer. The Board President's report. Dr. Romano is unfortunately unable to attend, but Dr. Romano wanted to mention the surveys that we have sent out as a board and to thank all the members of the public for participating. He would also like us, the board, to discuss the survey supporting live streaming, and would like us to discuss it tonight during old business and hopefully commit. And then he would like the public to know to look forward to updates on the use of the superintendent search survey results as we continue through the process. That concludes the President's report, and now the Business Administrator's report, please.
So I was just going to give a brief update as to what has been going on with Washington School. So this last rain, we had again water that developed in the pipe chase throughout the building, actually in the hallways underneath, there's a tunnel. And the assumption is that that groundwater was weeping into the tunnel from the blockage due to the storm catch basins outside, which were full. It was concluded that there was a 24-inch main outside that was completely overflowing. So that's when the DPW came in and found the blockage and was able to clean out that from the sewer catch basin located in the playground area of Washington School. The pipe chase that had the water in the building needs to be, have asbestos abatement prior to anyone entering into it to further review, to confirm that that's where the water's heaping in. That process would need a couple of weeks to abate the pipe chase area, and because it's friable asbestos as opposed to non-friable, the building would have to be vacated in order to do that. So we are holding off on that abatement. The DPW has cleared most of the blockage from the catch basin. Water is now flowing through, but there is still a concern. The DPW work is awaiting a response from the town engineer for the next steps because they're concerned with some kind of, the property behind us is not borough property, it's not town, school property, it's privately owned, and whether or not there's an easement on that. So they're waiting for the town engineer to weigh in on that. In regards to the boilers, two of the, two of the three boilers are able to fire up. The third, we're still waiting for a part. We also still need to do the pump controls, but we can run our boilers without the pump controls. The pump controls just help run, have the pumps run more efficiently. We have the pumps just straight on, and we'll have the pump straight on when we convert back to our boilers. We're anticipating the temporary boilers to be removed from the property by the end of November. And that will conclude my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Rosado. Student Representatives' report, please.
The elementary schools welcomed Washington School back to their home on October 12th. Oh, this is the elementary school report, by the way. They were thrilled to witness Washington School back in action. They also participated in the Week of Respect from October 4th through October 8th. Each elementary school engaged in activities such as wearing blue to stomp out bullying, wearing shirts to display positive messages, Pajama Day, and School Spirit Day. They also recognized Violence and Vandalism Awareness Week from October 18th to 22nd. The elementary school counselors collaborated in providing the students and their families with resources, engaged in lessons with the students in classrooms, and announced daily quotes during morning announcements. The elementary schools all had successful virtual back-to-school nights and gave their families a window into the learners' classrooms by presenting the expectations of curriculum, routine, and how to support the home and school connection. After two years, the elementary schools are excited to celebrate Halloween tomorrow by having their annual Halloween parades and classroom celebrations.
Middle school report. Our volleyball and soccer teams are wrapping up their fall seasons this week. All had excellent seasons of competitive fun and great team building with some impressive wins along the way. The middle school recognized the Week of Respect October 4th through the 8th. A number of events were included in this week, including the counselors leading the physical education classes in an HIB discussion, and then a walk of respect activity in front of the school, where students chalked the walk to show community of support for others. A virtual club and activity fair was held on October 8th, and students were encouraged to sign up for anything that interests them. Clubs and activities are well underway with activities like the student council's First Spirit Week and the Helping Hands Halloween Candy Collection for the children at Hackett's Act Hospital. If you have any extra candy, feel free to drop it off at the middle school next week. The PSO also was happy to bring back the Fall Festival. Students enjoyed apple cider, pizza, churros, and other treats with a DJ and other activities to celebrate. There was a huge turnout, and students had a great time spending a couple of hours together.
In high school academics, Start Strong testing has been successfully completed at all grade levels. Results from testing are anticipated to arrive in December. PSAT and SAT in-school testing for sophomores, juniors, and seniors was completed on October 13th. Mr. Piscadlo's forensic science class has completed their murder mystery project to learn how to sketch a crime scene. Last night, Westwood partook in the Happy, Healthy, Almost Stress-Free College Planning for Parents, Juniors, and Seniors virtual event hosted by bestselling author Harlan Cohen to learn how to navigate the college planning process. Additionally, all students participated in a virtual mental health assembly during the Week of Respect this past month. The first early decision, early action college application deadlines are fast approaching. With the help of the Guidance Department, the class of 2022 is applying to an impressive array of schools in what looks to be yet another successful application season. Good luck to all seniors with their postgraduate plans.
Athletics. State sectional tournaments have begun for many of our fall sports programs. Girls tennis already finished their season with their best record in years at 11 and 6. Boys soccer came one win away from winning their league and currently sit at 9, 4, and 2 as they head into the state playoffs. Field hockey made it all the way to the county finals but suffered defeat to the top seeded Northern Highlands last Sunday. They finished their season with a 12 and 7 record. All of Westwood's qualifying programs look to be competitive in their respective tournaments. Additionally, Westwood High School's only gymnast, Olivia Montobano, is Bergen County's floor exercise champion. The football team has won five straight games and were voted North Jersey Team of the Week for Week Six. They hope to improve it to a 7 and 2 record and prove their current seed in the North Group Two playoffs tomorrow when they take on Lincoln in their final regular season home game. They've already secured a home playoff game next weekend. Be sure to come out and support all of Westwood's fall sports programs as they look to make exciting playoff runs.
Performing arts. The performing arts are back in full swing. The Woodington players are preparing for their tech week rehearsals for the fall play next week with the help of lighting, sound, stage art, set construction, and costume crews. Their production of Our Town will be from November 11th through 13th at 7:00 PM. The Woodies are very excited to be putting on their first in-person performance in almost two years. The marching band performed at the North Jersey Band Festival at Clifton High School on Sunday, October 24th. The band had the chance to showcase all of their hard work they've put in this year, as well as meet and greet other bands in the region. The Woodwind Chamber Ensemble is meeting weekly to prepare for their holiday caroling field trip in December. The Tri-M Music Honor Society, Art Honor Society, and International Thesbian Honor Society's pumpkin carving and painting fundraiser on October 17th was a huge success. A tradition that the Arts Department is glad to bring back at last.
Clubs and activities. Since the club fair took place at the end of September, all of Westwood's clubs have begun to have regular meetings, and some have hosted fundraisers to fund their respective programs. Several new clubs have been formed, including the Spikeball Club, which was founded by senior Connor Munson and coach Camperal. Westwood's first esports team was founded by Mr. Krebs, and they had their first competition on October 15th, competing against varsity esports teams in the Eastern Conference Play versus Esports League. Fall Spirit Week, sponsored by the Student Body Council, is taking place this week with the themes of Pajama Day, Glass Collar Day, Wear Pink Day for Breast Cancer Awareness, Cardinal Pride Day, and Halloween. Many clubs have been preparing for their virtual competitions as well, such as the debate team, who has their first competition tomorrow. That concludes the report.
Thank you. We're going to go on to committee reports. There is no Policy and Governance Committee report this evening. They will meet again in November. We'll move on to Finance and Facilities. Mr. Gersmeyer?
Thank you very much. Finance and Facilities met October 13th and had a lot to cover with the current events and planning for the future. We started with our presentation from the Athletic Department, sharing their, their wish list and, and critical needs for the upcoming years, not just this year but next year. Some things identified included the need for replacement of the, the turf and track here at the high school, requesting that the tennis courts be looked at, the weight room, and committee members discussed doing a brief site, site visit to the existing weight room to understand the current situation better. Additional items in facilities included media center updates. Some other requests were a band room, you know, updates to the band room that haven't been touched in many years. And then we, and the recommendation from the committee is that the board would like to see all information, more estimates, better, it was all broad conversation with just round numbers thrown out. We need to see better estimates received to, to add to the list of the long-term facilities project to evaluate against everything else on the list, which brought us to our, the rest of our facility projects. Current 21, current 2021-22 budgeted projects include high school media center updates, a new Berkeley faculty bathroom, the roof at the George Elementary School, the electrical assessment project, which is the precursor project to, that will paint the picture of the, the HVAC needs at the elementary school and the high school. More faculty bathroom renovations and asbestos abatement, which, Dr., you're a doctor now, Mr. Rosado alluded to in his report. Potential budgeted projects for the 2022-23 school year include the electrical panel upgrades themselves at George, Berkeley, Brookside, and the high school. Well, obviously, Washington, that's, that's the bigger picture, and HVAC for all those mentioned schools as well. The, we discussed the, the high school turf and track a little more in detail. It's been on the radar for the last three or four years, and we essentially get the, the word each year saying we could get another year out of it. We're, we're at that point where getting another year out of it wouldn't be a, a good option. The, the typical timeline of when it makes sense to do a turf replacement, the suggestion from the administration is, is directly following the football seas, directly following a football season, so it will take place during the winter, so it would be ready for the spring sport season as well. If, if that is something that becomes part of the 22-23 budget, that, that means that we still have to get through a spring season and a fall season before, that's the earliest it can get addressed. So when we get more into budget discussion as a full board, we have to keep that in mind about the life of that field. We've gotten over 10 years out of it already, so it's, it's actually been a great investment, so, but it's time to revisit it again. Other recommendations from facilities projects, the media center designs will be revisited with architects to come up with an updated design plan before going out to bid. The primary focus for the electrical study is on the current electrical panels, as well as incorporating PSE and G requirements on all sites. We talked about the updates from Washington School. I think the community has learned a lot about Washington School from Dr. Mortimer's updates. They're, they're extremely detailed and transparent. Mr. Rosado alluded to the temporary boilers in place. We talked about funding sources because we're here as a board. We're talking about insurance coverage, as well as emergency, emergency reserves that are in place that we allocated funds to during last, last spring's discussion for the current budget year. So the recommendation for that is that the board will approve on tonight's agenda the emergency contracts that the district entered into to help with the Washington School mitigation. Insurance will be covering most of that cost with the temporary panels and boilers, leading to the temporary TCO. We're most likely, for the balance not covered by insurance, withdraw what happened from Capital Reserve, or actually, I should say Emergency Reserve, yeah, Emergency Reserve. Okay, moving on, as if we hadn't covered big enough topics in that meeting, we moved on to elementary class size analysis. This is on the agenda tonight during old business, but I'll give some high level of what the discussion was in our Finance and Facilities meeting. We started with the, the, the recommended range of class size numbers that we, that the Finance Committee received from the Policy and the Curriculum Committee, so it's going around the horn here. The, the, there was a minimum, an optimal, and a maximum number of students for each class. For K to 2, the minimum recommended, and this is just the beginning of our discussion, the minimum 15, optimal 18, maximum 20, that's K to 2. For 3 to 5, a little higher, minimum 18, optimal 21, maximum 24. Those were the numbers that, that's not in, that's not set in stone, yeah, that's not voted on, that's what's been going around committees, just to make that clear for everybody. We also talked about the Viviano, Viviano project that was approved in township in late September, the 24 town homes that look like they'll have three bedrooms each, and 52 single homes having four bedrooms each. So we went through and received some analysis from Mr. Rosado and the administration looking at our current classroom spaces in each of the four elementary schools, the current usage now, and next year, considering 5th graders clapping out to 6th grade, and potential, based on the demographic study, we have the incoming kindergarten classes to see if we keep, and we go by the optimal numbers I just read out loud, trying to predict the future of what that's going to look like. So how that shakes out in each of the four elementary schools, and looking to that projection to see potential need for additional classes we don't have to put kids in. So that's the reason why, why we were even talking about it in the first place, to try to identify where the need is based on current, current and future possible numbers. We'll go more into it during old business, but that's the huge foundation of the whole discussion. Oh, yeah, recommendation was to talk about it at the next meeting, by the way. Moving on to the budget calendar for 22-23. We usually, it's, it's basic, talking about going backwards on when, when state, state deadlines are. As a group, we're definitely interested in starting the process sooner than typical years, hence the discussion we're having tonight, to try to get on board as a full board, talking about especially the capital projects. But it's, it's still just a preliminary schedule of what happens in January, February, March, and April. Sorry. We discussed the potential of having site visits since we have several new board members that haven't had facilities tours the way that some of other board members have had in recent years. This is pre-COVID, was the last, actually, we saw, some of us saw the middle school, right when it opened, and there were still a few outstanding projects to be done in there. But we're, we're looking to see, especially Washington School, when we can get to Washington School, get some eyeballs on the high school wish list projects, and especially the new, new middle school for the new board members. The topic of the middle school athletic fields came up. A couple of committee members brought up concerns about a couple of things. One, one concern was about if there needs to be work done at the high school, where can we repurpose athletics? Can we re, can we use the middle school fields for that? Now, that, that field was just sodded as part, new sod was put down as part of the middle school project. We also talked about the original second phase of the middle school project was to also include more athletic fields in the, not quite the A field, but behind the A field, to incorporate things like baseball and softball as well. So the recommendation was to get a proposal from our, our district architect for Phase 2 of the middle school field project, to, to really nail that down. There's also DEP issues with drainage, and we all know that there's a lot of water retention issues with the stream. I feel like we have streams of water by all our schools. It's a real great, real great scenario to have. Next committee meeting dates, November 10th, tentatively, and December 8th. And more topics that would definitely be discussed include more updates on what's happening with the electrical panels and with Washington School, and where we are with electrical assessments for the potential AC upgrades. And then we will also, at a future meeting, talk about the security audit findings that Dr. Mortimer alluded to in her report. And that concludes my report for the unit.
Thank you, Mr. Gersmeyer. Mrs. Price, curriculum and instruction?
The Curriculum and Instruct, and Programs Committee met on October 18th, and at that time, we discussed the new health curriculum and standards. There's an elementary parent letter that was presented to us, as well as a middle, middle school parent letter. The teachers spent October 11th Professional Development Day working on the curriculums and lesson plans for the new K to 8 health curriculum. And they're, we're creating lesson plans that will be public for the parents to view so that they can decide if they're going to excuse their children from the portions of the health curriculum. And that, this is supported by our district's policy. The elementary parent letter regarding the new health standards will be going out this month, if it has not already gone out. And after reviewing some of the sample lesson plans, the committee requested that the middle school take the remaining time that it has before implementation to do a deeper dive into the new standards. They're going to be spending some additional professional development time potentially for lesson planning, for the sensitivity of the teachers, and additional correction, curriculum writing time. We also discussed the 2021-2022 standardized assessment reports presentation by Mr. Kenduck, where we looked at the Spring 2021 results of the access for the English learning, the ELL, English, help me, English, I'm sorry. The, the assessments, and we took a look at all of the data from that. The takeaways from that was that less students took the assessment, I'm sorry. I apologize. Remember I said I was getting old? Less students took the, shut up. Less students took the access than, than in previous years because there were students who were full remote and did not take the assessment. The K to 12 trends are difficult to identify because there are fewer than 10 students at the middle school and 11 at the high school. The average access score decreases to 3.29 from 3.64 in 2019 and 3.83 in 2018. This isn't any better. Growth at the grade's K to 5 level is confirmed as the percentages of the students classified as entering decreased by grade 2, where 80% of the students scored as expanding and bridging. And the K to 5 students obtained a higher level with bridging of listening and reading than speaking and writing. There were no glaring gaps in the English language acquisition by gender or race based on the average access scores or the four domains. And Berkeley School may be the best model to support the aforementioned conclusion, as there were approximately 20 students who took the access and that three races were represented. And the committee discussed the data centered around the results from 2021. The presentation we got to see, we had discussed the committee, we, we suggested that we should, that that presentation be one of the four formal data presentations to the board at public, and the public during one of the remaining meetings in 2021-22. Additionally, we discussed the middle school enrichment courses. The What I Need or Win period is an opportunity for students to choose how they want to spend the last 30 minutes of their day, their school day. And it's a four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. During that period, the students engage in enrichment courses, choices. First marking period is Monday and Thursday, and the choices are Tuesday and Friday. Students may also, students may also engage in band lessons, related services, make up an assignment, and gifted and talented instruction or extra help. Students don't have to miss out on academic courses to receive their related services, band, et cetera, or stay after school to make up assignments. The students choose their win choices by filling out a Google form, ranking their top choices, and students participate in two enrichment courses each marking period for a total of eight for the school year. Wednesdays alternate between advisory, where the students are engaged in character education curriculum, and study hall, where students can complete homework, or see teacher for extra help, or to make up work. The committee requested that Mr. Kenduck and/or Dr. Mortimer gain clarity from the middle school on how the win period is being utilized on daily lessons. The committee would like confirmation on whether or not students have the opportunity to choose how they want to spend the last 30 minutes of their day for the four days a week. We discussed, I believe we got an invitation to join, or possibly join, the Pasgak Valley Regional Curriculum Office. That's a consortium of the elementary schools in Hillsdale, Mount Vale, Rivervale, and Woodcliff Lake. They work together to produce curriculum, and the department supervisors take the lead on that curriculum. The committee meets one day a month, and we're, the, the information was brought to us to possibly look into joining the curriculum writing with the high school. Pasgak Valley pays the benefits of the curriculum office staff for sending districts pay at a per pupil cost if we would choose to join. The committee suggested that with the lack of subject-specific supervisors, the district would benefit from such a resource and would support the initiative, and Dr. Mortimer is going to continue to explore that opportunity. And our next meeting is scheduled to be December 6th.
Thank you, Mrs. Price. Negotiation Committee Report. Mrs. Hanlon?
No report tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanlon. For Special Public Report, Participation and Performance Results of the 2020, 2021 Annual Statewide Assessment, Mr. Michael Kenduck is the Director of School Programs.
So we're going to go on the screen, so I'm going to ask the board to go down and as we set up.
we set up. Good evening, how are you? My name is Mike Kenduck. I'm the Director of School Programs at Westwood Regional, and the purpose of my presentation is to share some information from assessments that our students took this past school year. Typically, this presentation would be a lot longer because it would include information from the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. Students typically in grades three through 11 are tested in math, English, and in three grade science, but none of that information is going to be in tonight's presentation because the tests were canceled last year. So the three presentations I'm gonna chat with you about are the dynamic, dynamic learning maps, access for Ls, and alternative access for Ls. So for the dynamic learning maps, this is an assessment that students who have significant cognitive disabilities take, and this assessment is for students where even if they had accommodations and accessibility to the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, you know, they wouldn't be able to show what they learn. So this assessment gives them an opportunity to show what they can learn. And I'm just reporting publicly that we had less than 10 students take the assessment, and so when there's less than 10 students that take an assessment for confidentiality, we don't report on the results. So I'm just reporting that we had students, less than 10, take the assessment last school The access for Ls, this is a test that our English language learners take every year, so I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail about what Ms. Price spoke about in the Curriculum and Instruction Report. But essentially, what this is, is all students who receive ELL services, they take this assessment in the spring, and if they score anywhere a four, it's a scale of one to six, and if a student scores a 4.5 or higher overall, then there's the possibility that they can exit from receiving ELL services. So that's what the test is. And besides earning a 4.5, there's also other measures that their teachers look at. It could be standardized tests, it could be classroom assessments that the teachers give, so it's not that they just earn a 4.5, that the 4.5 makes them eligible to exit if the other measures pan out. So if you take a look, the scale from one to six, so a student is gonna be in the expanding, in between the expanding and bridging, if you take a look at the green there, that's where a student is if they're gonna be eligible to exit from ELL services. And you'll notice in some of the charts that I'm gonna show you, you're not gonna see any of the light blue at reaching because typically, we exit students at 4.5, so they're ready to go, they can read, speak, read, listen, and write English. And this is just kind of talking about what Ms. Price said. Last year, we had, we had more than 10 students earn a 4.5 on the assessment. However, when teachers look at those multiple measures, they decided that those students aren't ready to exit from ELL services, so just some information to share. You can take a look at the trends over the course of the last four years. The assessments didn't happen in 2020. And like Ms. Price said, you know, something of note, that's, that's something to consider, is that first bullet, which is that last year, the average access score did decrease from the past years. So this chart, this shows that our elementary students really are doing well and acquiring English language skills. If you see, when they come in at kindergarten, you see the red, right, they're entering. But by fourth and fifth grade, they're at the, the green colors, and so most of our students, when they exit, they exit in, you know, fourth and fifth, maybe they finish fifth grade, but by the time they go to middle school, they exit from ELL services. It's hard to kind of make some judgments about the program K-12 because there's significantly less students at the middle school. Typically, there's less than 10 students at the middle school. There's been anywhere between 10 and 20 students at the high school, but a majority of the students are at our elementary schools. And I included this slide. It just shows, you know, where our students do better, which is the listening and reading domains is where our students do well, and, you know, they need to work on making more progress in the speaking and writing. I think this, this is an important slide, so what this shows is that regardless of the gender, you know, or the ethnic group of our ELL students, they're pretty much all performing at, at the same level, which, which is good. And the same can be said when you break it down by the, the four different domains. So there's the alternate access for Ls, that's another assessment. It's essentially the same assessment as the access for Ls, but it's paper-based. The access for Ls assessment that we just spoke about is, is done online, on Chromebooks, but there is a paper-based version, and this is typically students who are both ELL students and special education students. They're the ones that would be eligible, that would take the paper-based alternative access, and we didn't have any students that took this assessment last year. Just some thoughts on, on what we can do to help our English language students. There's an assessment called the WIDA model, and it, it's the model because it basically is a very similar assessment scored the same way with the same domains as the access for Ls. And what we use this for is twofold. It can be used to exit a student in the middle of the school year, but it can also be used because we can check the progress on how the students are doing in the four different domains. So we order multiple versions of the WIDA model and give it to the students at different intervals to check on their progress. We do also offer a summer program, so we offered a summer program last, pretty much every summer, we've offered a program for ELL students. Something that we were able to do last year during the school year was offer instruction every day to our ESL students, so they didn't go a full day, but they were able to come in every day for at least a half day. And then, as you can see, we have additional basic skills instructors that we added for this school year. And at the high school, we have an extra counselor who helps all students, or many students who are, you know, apt to fail. So if an ESL student is in that category, then we can get them some extra academic assistance. That pretty much concludes my presentation. Thanks so much, have a good evening. You mean access to that data in that format? So what we, what we used is, we have a product called Linkit, where we can upload the results from tests that are taken, and once that data is uploaded, you know, I can go in there, we can go in there, we can, you know, check by gender, categories, by the different domains. So that's how I was able to get those charts, came from, from Linkit.
Thank you, Mr. Kenduck. Up next is a public forum. During this portion of the meeting, district residents and staff are invited to address the Board of Education on any topics specifically addressed in this agenda, or on any, or on any other questions, comments, or concerns that may be in respect to the operation of their schools. The Board requests that the individuals sign the speaker's list, giving name and address, and asks that all remarks be directed to the Board as a whole, not to individuals. The Board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding personnel matters are discouraged and cannot be responded to by the Board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The Board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable, for any comments made by members of the public. If a matter concerning a district staff member is of interest or concern to a resident, the matter should be referred to a responsible building principal, superintendent of schools, or the Board of Education, either by telephone, letter, or email. Although the Board may not respond to items raised during the public forum, all public comments will be considered and may be discussed tonight under the appropriate agenda items or new business at this meeting, at subsequent meetings under old business, or during a board committee meeting if appropriate. Each speaker's statement will be limited to five minutes in duration. The public forum will be limited to one hour in duration. Michael, you got?
Shut it off. Hi, Sabrina Craftchik, 270 Washington Avenue in Westwood. First of all, thank you all for being here. I wanted to start by commending my children's elementary school at Brookside. They had a wonderful back-to-school night, and from my perspective, it was very successful. I did want to speak tonight because I understand that you're gonna be having further discussions about class sizes, and just wanted to bring up an idea or something to think about as we evaluate the facilities and the spaces we have. I do hear a lot of talk about preschool being part of a nationwide addition to schools. And so I don't want to lose sight of that, that additional classrooms may be necessary. Having children that both attended our own preschool that's listed in the high school currently, I will say that if it's expanded to all preschool kids, I think we can all agree that the high school is less than an ideal location in order to have preschool. I know that many parents expressed a lot of concern that we've got seniors in high school, and while we try to time things so that they don't interact with the preschool kids, maybe if that program has to get expanded, the high school might not be the best place for that to happen, and I was doing some thinking and digging. So I do know that there's districts around that have decided to split their elementary schools. So what they have is one building, in this case, if preschool's added, preschool will be there, but they'll have one building with kindergarten to second grade in one building, and then they'll move to another building for third, fourth, and fifth grade. Given that we have two schools in each town, with the addition of additional residents in Washington Township, I would like, as a taxpayer, to see an analysis done to see, instead of adding on to classroom space, which has been the discussion, if it can get accomplished by really targeting schools that have age-appropriate kids together. The other piece of that that I looked into, several months ago, Mr. Rosado provided me with the, the budget, and what I learned over, through looking through it and trying to really understand, as far as curriculum goes, in many cases, you're paying for curriculum either by grade or by building. As opposed, so, so if you have four schools, I'll use iReady, even though it's not a great example, because it was, it's also in the middle school, but if, but as iReady was launched, it looked to be in the budget to cost initial startup about $17,000 per school. If it were a grade-specific curriculum, you would only have to pay for that curriculum to be launched in two schools if it were divided, say, for second-grade curriculum, as opposed to paying for it in four schools. So I think that it's worth the analysis to look about viability of splitting this, and then present it back, maybe, so that we all can see. I hear already, especially parents that have multiple drop-offs because of the Washington School situation, not liking having an additional school for drop-off, but if there's a cost savings that makes more sense, and that makes more sense for the learning of the students to group them that way, it's something that I'd be curious to know more about. So I hope you have some time over this year, we're not in budget season yet, to look into those prospects, and thank you for your time.
Would anybody else like to speak before we close public session?
Hi, I'm Amy Finargian. Avenue over in Washington Township. First, I wanted to express my appreciation for the return of Washington School. My, my children are elated. They love that they're back in their school. They found it very exciting to, to have to be picked up early due to the recent potential flooding again. It was all very exciting for them, but everybody was great, and we really appreciated all the texts and notifications when the fire department was there. It was wonderful. I did have a question regarding the survey that was brought to us regarding the live streaming. I was under the impression that the survey would include potential cost against the budget, but the survey actually did not mention that, so I'm unclear if the live streaming option actually does incur cost. So I wanted clarification on that. I was a little disappointed to hear that we wouldn't get the health information, health curriculum information until tomorrow. Would have loved to jump right into my comments, but I don't have anything to review. Just to piggyback off of the previous speaker's idea about the splitting of the Just to piggyback off of the previous speaker's idea about the splitting of the classroom, I mean, I know it was this, she was bringing up tax savings, but I actually thought towards the health curriculum, when certain grade levels that are meshed together are learning information that maybe you don't feel younger students should be purviewed to, that the split would maybe minimize some of that to only happen then maybe at home, where you can kind of guide the conversations better. So I guess I'm in support of that idea, too, for other reasons. Wanted to express still that, you know, we are under lots of mandates that have no judicial review, no legislative review, and just that, you know, we are coming up in election season, so for the community that's listening, you know, please keep that in mind when you're voting. Thank you.
Not seeing anybody else approaching the podium. We're going to close public session. Moving on to administrative and governance. Can we get a motion?
Sure. Joe, I'd like to move administrative and governance A through E as listed on the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Abu-Dawud?
Yes.
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gersmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
A, C, D, E, and F, yes. Motion B, abstain.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Sure. I'd like to move policy, motion A and B as listed on the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Abu-Dawud?
Yes.
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gersmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Need a motion on personnel?
Make a motion on items A through V for personnel.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Abu-Dawud?
Yes.
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gersmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, Finance and Facilities, I'd like to make a motion to move items A through Y as listed on the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I just want to mention, on the agenda, is the, a lot of the emergency contractors that we had to contract with for the issue that occurred at Washington School. The reason it's on there is so that we can, I will then have to send this off to the county because we did a lot of this purchasing without bids, but we did it under the guise of the emergency contract law because of what happened.
Any other discussion? Mr. Pontillo?
Keith, just for clarification's sake, and you're referring to item Y, that's correct?
Correct.
Those items are dependent upon the date in which we no longer carry those services. Are those not to exceed numbers, or are they the bill?
The "not to exceed" numbers are because of the rental of the equipment.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Yep. Also, I just, with that, there might, there are still a few other bills or invoices I haven't received yet, so you might see another set in December, just letting the Board know.
That's fine, I just want clarity on that, thank you.
Mr. Snee?
Mr. Rosado, what's the likelihood that we will not be able to get rid of the boiler, the temporary boiler?
I don't have concerns. I believe the temporary boiler would be able, by the end of November, would be removed. Where it's almost done.
Very good.
I think the issue was more the getting the labor here was the difficult portion of it.
Right, very good.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Abu-Dawud?
Yes.
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gersmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Can we get a motion on curriculum programs?
I'll make a motion for item A on curriculum and programs.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Abu-Dawud?
Yes.
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gersmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We're going to move on to old business. There's one item listed that Dr. Romano put down. He also asked that we put live streaming down. Clearly, old business is anything we'd like to discuss, so I open the floor to the Board. Just ask them, wait to be called on so that we can do this in an efficient manner. Mr. Pontillo?
Can I just ask that we discuss the live streaming first over the class size? I think the discussion will be shorter.
Sure. So we're going to discuss live streaming first.
I'll go.
Mr. Pontillo?
I think that the results of the survey are clear, and not to steal the superintendent's thunder, but I think that there was a discussion that the only additional cost for live streaming, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is the personnel cost to allow the staff to do it. In my humble opinion, I think that the cost for the staff outweighs, I'm sorry, it doesn't outweigh, I think the cost of the staff member to do it is well worth the public interest on the entire budget, and I think that the results of the survey are pretty clear, so I, I'm in favor of us doing the live streaming. Thank you.
Mr. Snee?
And just so we're clear, we're talking about live streaming as a one-way feed out to the community. We're not talking about the community members being able to call in.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yeah, that, I mean, that's exactly why we did the survey, so we could, you know, before we did the expenditure, while it's not major, it's, it was the right thing to do, was to survey the community. The numbers bear it out, so I agree. That's fine, and like Mr. Snee said, it's a one-way, you know, if the community can watch it from home, but they're not going to be able to call in, they're going to have to be here in person if they want to speak during the public forum.
Anyone else?
Just a quick comment, I wanted to, whoever, whenever people see the recording of this meeting, I just wanted to thank the public. Within two or three days, there were almost 600 responses to that survey, so it really shows how important this is to have people have access to it. I think it was a big, the only way we could really stay together as a community for a year and a half, so, and the public confirmed that, so I'm all for this.
Mr. Snee?
And just to give the community a sense of expectation, I guess this is for Mr. Rosado, how quickly do we think we would be able to turn that capability on?
I, I, as far as the tech aspect of it, I'm going to have to defer that to our tech department, and I don't know if we are able to get this on right away. I don't know if we have to pass a policy first, or did we pass that already? I don't know.
I believe we tweaked the policy, and I believe we also hired people to work the equipment, so it might be as simple as just getting them on the calendar and making sure someone can come to the November meeting.
So we already reworded the policy? We just have to vote at the next meeting, then?
I think the Board already voted on the policy. I will double-check, but I think we have all this set up already.
Okay. Mr. Pontillo?
Do we have to take a roll call to do it, or?
We're good to go. My understanding from Dr. Romano was that we had to vote on it tonight, but from what I'm understanding from Dr. Mortimer, is that we already did that. So we were waiting on the results from the survey, and being the public is also for it. I think the next step was we were just moving forward.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So we're done with live streaming, and we're going to move forward on class sizes, and I open the floor to
Me?
Mr. Rosado to explain.
Okay. So, I, so I know a lot of discussion has been going back and forth, class sizes, policy has gone through every committee, and with the final committee, with the Finance Committee, they tasked us to proceed with a certain direction, as Mr. Gersmeyer had mentioned in his report. I think the Finance Committee changed, I think, there was some variation between the final class sizes, between K-1, 2, and 3, 4, 5. So where we ended up, K-1, 2, we're talking a minimum of 15 per class, optimum class size of 18, and a maximum of 20. For 3, 4, 5, they discussed a minimum of 18, optimum of 21, and a maximum of 24. So with all that information, took the data and put it into this spreadsheet, which you guys, which I've passed out to the Board this evening. We, the Finance Committee tasked with, they wanted to see what the numbers of what the, what the, it would look like at the optimum number, and targeting and reaching towards the optimum number of pupils in a class. So with that, you know, the optimum shooting for the K-1, 2, optimum, or kindergarten, more kindergarten, looking at the incoming class size. At 18, sticking to the 18, that would mean by the '24, '25 school year, we would need a total of eight classrooms. We would be shy eight classrooms to maintain or be in compliance with that optimum number. The Finance Committee also said, use the, give us, give me the, let's look at the analysis for 20, for the maximum size. So at 20, for the '24, '25 school year, is really when everything hits the district. That's the year we also anticipate the Viviano project to, I guess, start filling up or opening up. We would need four classrooms at the maximum of 20. This discussion was also brought to the administrative teams at one of our administrative meetings. The administrators discussed the sizes. Their recommendation was to reduce the maximum class size to 22, and I say reduce based on the current standard of 25 for K-1, 2. If the district goes forward with a 22 class size, in the '24, '25 school year, we would need two classrooms. So, I just got to take this off for a second. I know. So, I mean, there's a lot of data that went into this, utilizing the demographic report that we had at the time. We are in year two of that projected report, so we utilized those numbers and went forth and sought how many classes we needed. In here, we also looked at the variation between the two towns, where the demographic study said that the students will be attending, so I, you have in front of you a packet for the district total, a total for Washington Township, and a total for Borough of Westwood. I guess the, going forward, the next steps would be to determine, so, answer some questions. One be, the first one being, what would be the maximum class size? K-1, 2, 20, 22. Discussion on a new demographic study, a new or updated study that would take place to ensure our projected numbers are still on track, and include not only the Viviano project, but also the potential apartment complex proposal. Three would be determining the funding for this, these options. To go building class sizes, to building new construction, we would need to determine whether we want to go out for a bond referendum or a second question. And if we're shooting for this '24, '25 school year, we really need to move, obviously, on this. Discussion with the architect, really are, we would have to shoot for the September bond date, referendum date, which is September 2022. We have to have at least six months prior to that to submit all the paperwork down to the state, so that we could go for, out on a referendum vote. We could go for the second question, which would be November 2022, and get the response from the taxpayers at that point. Those two dates are really our dates, so that we could implement this by September 2024. Because once we get the answers there, then we can move on to bidding the project, getting our funding, signing the contract with the contractor, and giving the contractor enough time to get the supplies to get the job done. We anticipate one-year construction, a year pre-construction, and another six months for state paperwork. So, that's how we came up with our options. If we were to build the four classrooms, the recommendation from me would be to look at the Washington Township schools, either building four on Washington School, or building four on George and moving classes around. But by adding the four classrooms to the one of the Washington School buildings, we would then balance the number of classrooms in both communities. So we currently have 30 classrooms in the Township and 34 in the Borough, so we would be balancing the 34, 34 classrooms, spaces. If we were to build in Westwood area, it would only be Brookside School that I think we would be able to build on. Going back, discussion with the architect, Berkeley is tough because of the flood zone issue and the proximity to the Brook, it causes a lot of DEP issues. So, at that, I open up this discussion, I guess, to the Board.
Mr. Snee?
First thing, on the numbers that you, I believe, for Viviano, I don't know if this matters or not, but I believe Viviano total is only 66 units. I believe it's 24 townhomes and 42 physical homes. So, if that helps knocking off a couple homes, so be it. Couple things. One, you said that the bond referendum, that would be September 2022. The second question on the ballot would be November 2022. Do both of those have a precursor of having to have everything done six weeks, six months in advance?
For the bond referendum, we, there is more stricter requirements
Okay.
with the state. Bond, bond, voting for bond referendums can happen four times a year.
Okay.
Can happen in September, December, January, and March, I believe. So, we would be shooting for September, anytime after that, you know, there were two, we don't have enough time for December, January, and March this time.
Right.
But anything after that will then prolong.
But we, so for September 2022, we'd have to have everything approved and in place six months prior to that?
Yes, we would have to start, we would have to begin that process in, timeline's January.
Okay. I was going to suggest tomorrow, but that's okay. And then, on the September 2024 date- And then, on the September 2024 date, you gave us a year of pre-construction, a year of construction, and a year of state paperwork planning, whatever you want to call it. Which one of those does the September 2024 date represent? Would that be the?
Opening of the, of the classrooms.
That would be the opening of the classrooms. Okay. Okay. And then, the, you mentioned that there'd be four classrooms built. The candidates, you said, you suggested were George or Washington in Township. So, that allows us to balance it from 30, imbalance, if you will, or differential of 30, 34 to 34 and 34.
Correct.
Now, would that be four classrooms would either be added to Washington or George or two and two?
I, I believe, well, that, that's what we could discuss.
Okay.
Ideally, the most efficient way is building at one location.
Right.
And, you know, with the, with the recent passing of the policy, with the flexible boundaries, I know the George area was small because of the size of the building. If we expand the size of the building, we expand the general area. We do have that flexibility now. So, by doing that, that'll, that'll take residents that would normally go to Washington to George, and it'll allow, you know, trickle down.
Okay. Okay. And then, the, the, so we would have to move on that, we would have to move on these decisions sooner rather than later?
Yeah, I think we need to keep this conversation alive and.
And then, there was, was, there was the discussion, I remember, we had talked about potentially doing a, going back and doing a study, a population study for just Washington Township. Is that still not something that, or, no?
What? The demographic study, yeah, I, I mentioned that, we would have to get either a new or updated study.
But that would just be for Washington Township?
Well, that would be for the district.
Okay.
I think, I, I, in fairness, if we're going to move forward, I mean, there's been a lot that has occurred over these past two years that could have a substantial impact
Right.
On our decision. You know, a lot of people moved out, a lot of people moved in.
Right.
And, you know, what we did for, three years ago.
No, I, I think it's a great idea, and I'm, I'm very glad that we're considering doing that.
Mrs. Columbo.
Sorry, can you, the four classrooms, that would be the max of 20 or the optimal? I'm just trying to, because I, I wrote down eight classrooms, but then I wrote down four.
So, i-if you look at the, the page one, and I know it's small, I was trying to get as much data in there.
I was hoping you passed out magnifying glasses with these.
But I, I believe Dr. Mortimer has sent everyone a link to this, to this spreadsheet. So, I mean, I, I was just printing this out so we have something in front if we have to reference it. But the eight classrooms were for the optimum number, so the 18 per class. And, you know, that, you know, that's where things get tricky, you know, 18. And, and so that the board understands, when I, when I put these numbers together, I didn't, I stuck with the demographic report and the assignment of the students based on the demographic report without altering anything based on our lines, or the, the flexible boundaries. So, obviously, we could tweak it a little to make things work better because, you know, we're at that, we might be at that cusp. One student puts us over the 18, you know, but, you know, the other school might have room for that other student to maintain the 18, so we don't have to get that extra section. I mean, there's just so many scenarios. I, I just had to stick with one and kind of give a general picture of what it looks like. So, at the worst-case scenario, it was eight, at the 18, the optimum number that was recommended. And then, four at the 20, which was the recommendation from the finance committee, because I believe curriculum had another number and policy had another number. So, I, I just kind of went with one number. And so that everyone knows the, the current policy has it at 18, 22, and 25, K-5. So, it's a deviation from the current policy.
This is silly, but I guess I feel like if we're building to build for a little extra space, I, I always think, like, we're building just for the max. So, then what if we need more? And if we're there, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud, sorry. Maybe it's better to have more than less, no? No. I mean, I just, we're there, we're building, might as well, because to do it again, if we expand again, like, when, when we originally made these buildings, we thought we had enough, right? And then, we're going to, I just, I'm thinking as we're growing, maybe we should grow a little bit more to be prepared. I don't know, just a thought.
I did notice on the bottom of your chart, it does say art could go to art on a cart, which adds two extra classrooms in some schools, or an extra room in other schools.
It, it's not an ideal situation, but there, you know, we can look, we can look at other classrooms. Again, this is, I'm putting, the information is, is based on the information that the board, in the direction the board wanted to go in reducing the maximum class size. You know, obviously, Jersey class size requires, allows us to exceed and go to 20, well, current policy is 25. On that second page, you'll see the, the maximum district-wide. You know, currently, based on the, the schools, you know, we can go, with 25 students at 11 sections per grade up to 275 with the 25 in a classroom. Going down to 18, caps us at 198. Maximum at, at, at 20, caps us at 220. You know, going up to 22 allows us to go to 242 with the 11 sections per grade, which is the, the norm. We are either 10 to 11 sections per grade currently. But, you know, the, the change in the policy and reducing the current numbers, maximums, you know, puts us in a, in a situation in which we have to expand.
Mr. Pontello.
Thank you. I think we're talking about building at possibly the, the worst time in the history of the world to build anything. There's supply chain, supply chain issues, there's issues with respect to all the contractors and the length of time that it takes you to get them there. And then, we're putting that up against how quickly we can get a, a referendum question on there and do this. I, I think that we're, we're fighting an uphill battle to try to do this on the timeframe that we're discussing here tonight. Not that this issue is not paramount and, and an important piece for the district, but to Maureen's point, I think that if we're going to do it, we have to do it right. We have to do it once. I don't think splitting schools is a good idea because of economy of scale, having your, builders at two different sites, I think it's just going to exponentially raise the cost of the project. When we talked about this in finance, so is, I think we identified that Washington School was the best place to, to possibly build on. We can't get the cart before the horse on this one. We, we have a, a flooding issue that's happened twice in a month or a few months, and we, we don't have a permanent solution to that right now. So, I think that we need to make sure we get that asbestos piece abated. I think we need to make sure that we're not going to have flooding in the basement there, because even if we went ahead and we rushed to build there, with the best of intentions, we could be displacing more students and, and taking our whole class size of policy argument and putting that in, in the garbage can. So, I think that it is an important discussion to keep going, but I think we're, we're trying to hit a moving target on this one right now. And I, I don't know that we can actually do it and do it right. So, I'm, I'm a bit hesitant. So, in order to, to allay some of the concerns that we have from the public, I think that we need to start looking at other ways we can do this, and whether that's by adding additional instructors in the classrooms on whatever, whatever way we could do that to try to have a more personalized learning experience for the kids, whether that's through co-teaching, whether it's through other employees in the classroom with some of the younger grades or something like that. And I think that we can look at the effectiveness of that, all the while carrying on the discussion of whether or not we should be building and how we're going to build and what the right number to build is. And, and I think, again, to, to Maureen's point, you know, if, if we're saying we're building for the, the optimal number, you know, I think we need to build for the maximum number, you know? But I also think that if we wait a little bit, and we wait till some of these supply chain issues come down, and we look at when the contractors don't have so much work backed up, I also think we're going to get a better, better value for, for what we do. So, I, I think those are some of the problems. We're also looking at, you know, the AC and the electrical upgrades, right? We're talking about budgeting, we're talking about early in the budget season, and there's just, just a lot here to bake into this, you know? So, I think we keep the conversation alive, but I think we got to keep all these things that I'm bringing up in the forefront of the conversation, and we, we need to make sure that we're doing right by the kids of the district, but we're also doing right by everyone that's paying the bill for the kids here, too. Thank you.
Mrs. Price.
What's the timeline to do, to get the new demographic information? When we, obviously, putting the cart before the horses, we don't have a good piece of data. All the other points are, are right on there as far as it's going to, this is going to cost a lot, a lot more money than it would have two years ago. Right? So, but I think if we get, if we can get that data as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I, I think some of the problems also with the demographic report are, are still the, the two unknowns. I know there's three properties in Township, the other strip is eight homes, which I don't think the impact is probably minimal in comparison to the other two lots. But the Viviano project just got approved, and it got approved for that numbers. But again, we don't know what's going to happen until the thing is built, I hate to say, you know? And then, the, and then, I know the, the apartment building, I guess, I don't remember what they call that property, but the apartment building is, I know it's still in planning, and I don't even, and no one knows what's going to happen with that. I mean, we can take assumptions. So, what I would, you know, going out for a demographic report now is going to take those assumptions of what is on, I guess, the books, but could be subject to change from what actually happens, too. So, I mean, it's, it's also a guessing. Even when we developed this one, we, we guessed with the Viviano project, it only took the Viviano project in consideration. And with that, it, they, it was, I, I don't remember the total number of students, but it was a district-wide, so at, at the Washington level on the 24, 25 school year, we, we added four students per grade is what it came down. It came down to four students per grade over the 12 grades, oh, over the 13 grades, kindergarten K-12.
Mr. Pontello.
With respect to the demographics report, I think that if we commission that study to occur, we should probably bake into that, that we would be looking to have it at least updated probably in the following couple of years because of these open projects in Washington Township. I would imagine most of the baseline information that they collect would be the same, but those new projects would probably have to be studied to, to determine impact. So, if we could, when we put the bid out for that to be done, if we could include a, a follow-up maybe in the, the next year after its completion and the following, that would give us, or whatever, whoever's on this board, the current data that we're going forth to make the right decision with this.
Mrs. Hamlin.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, along with Mr. Columbo, I agree. You know, our administrators came with an idea of two classrooms, you know, using the numbers, right? They, they felt two, that's, to me, is not, not doable at, at all. I heard something about possibility of two. We were looking at four or, to eight. I think that we really have to look at the eight and, you know, as a board, I personally think the, the maximum number is the number that we should be looking at. You know, regarding comments about possibility of preschools, that's something that we can't, to me, you know, I, I hear what the public's saying, but right now, that's something that I would imagine the federal government and the state are going to have to then give money towards, because every school district would have to worry about that at that point. So, I don't want to, I don't want to factor that into our, our current conversation regarding how many classrooms we might possibly. I want to look at the kids that were, you know, our K-12, our K-12 numbers. We know about what's going on in the Township. There are some rumors about things in Westwood. We know that there are apartments being built in Westwood as well. As to whether or not they're going to impact, we don't know yet. There was another large property that could turn into apartments as well. No, it's not in the, before our zoning board yet, but, you know, once those things start becoming rumors, the similar as into Township, we have to start listening to that. So, to me, the eight is the better number to work on as, as a board. First, to bring parity between the two towns plus cushion, you know? By, by doing eight additional classrooms gives not just parity, it gives, gives cushion as to classrooms. I agree with Mr. Pontello, you know, trying to rush this to, you know, right now, I would, you know, I think the, the bigger project right now is the electrical upgrades along with the AC. That it, that is something we've been talking about for years. It's not that I'm saying we don't do this, I'm saying, you know, that, that right now is, is a major focus. We do know that getting tradesmen, getting the goods and all the rest. So, it would impact if we rushed into this to try and get it onto the calendar for a, a budget vote or, or a referendum vote. But I think that we, we collectively need to come together as to how many classrooms we're looking at and more so than just how many kids in the classroom. I, I think that how many classrooms would be the thing that I think that we should agree upon more so.
Just, just want to clarify, the, the administrative recommendation was for, to, to increase the maximum at 22. The impact from that downfall came to the two classrooms, it's not an administration. I, I was just, that's based on the calculation and data. I just took all the numbers and put them in, and that's the form of that.
I just, I'm just, yeah.
Mr. Gersmeyer.
Just to piggyback off of Mrs. Hamlin about the, the electrical upgrades, so, and to Mrs. Columbo, Mr., everyone, we're all saying the same thing, which is great. We don't, we don't, we want to get this right, we don't want to rush into it, but we have to look at the umpteen variables that are being thrown at this one huge picture. If we're going to look at the, if we're going to do it right and, and not just build enough classrooms to fix a possible projection and then be stuck four years down the road, then we need to look at the potential. If we overshoot it, then we have enough rooms to go towards an optimal class size number or even the minimum class size number. That's, that's actually a good thing. Having 15 kids in a kindergarten class is a, is a, is like a, a dream come true for hundreds of families in this district that they've never seen before. So, that's actually a benefit from overshooting how many classrooms to build, right? That being said, if that's the direction the board wants to take, then we have to talk to the electrical assessments about, okay, we need the infrastructure to support a potential of X amount of classrooms in two different buildings in each town, one in each town. Say we need four classrooms in Brookside and four classrooms in Washington to help account for everything, then we need to have the electrical assessment know that so we can properly budget HVAC projects and electrical upgrades for the following year, just in, ju- worst-case scenario. I, I think that should be in our minds every time we talk about this, too.
Thank you. Mr. Snee, did you have your hand up before?
I did.
Okay.
The name of the project is 44 Franklin, and the other project is Gorga. And Gorga is probably the least of our worries, because the, the size and, and of the profiles of the homes, I, I don't think that's going to be our problem. 44 Franklin will be, will be a challenge.
Mr. Pontello.
One other point for the demographer, if they're going to be doing the study anyway, if they could look at the impact that would be upon the district if we had the mandatory pre-K put in from the state, at least we could understand what that would look like and, and determine if we have to, or what, what it would actually be, you know? So, maybe we could ask them to add that into the demographer's report, so we just understand where we're at in, in case that mandate comes.
That's a federal mandate, don't we? Or is that a state? Yeah, federal, yeah.
I'm, I'm sure it's a mandate without a dollar attached to it, though, you know? So, I believe we're.
Would that be one school in each municipality to handle a mandated pre-K? I would, I would, I would assume. I mean, I don't want to assume, but it'd be great if it was only just one building in each town, so.
Yeah, but if, all I'm saying is if we understood the impact that that would have in the report, and we keep that current over the next few years, you know, that would probably be helpful as well.
Absolutely.
We could probably eyeball that, because in general, we have about 200 kids on a grade level, so you were, you would be talking, we would need 10, 11 more classrooms if everybody showed up.
Dropping the bucket.
Probably, probably double, depending on if it's three, four men, if it's just four-year-old mandate or three-year-old mandate, it could be either 200 to 400-plus kids. four-year-old mandate or three-year-old mandate, it could be either 200 to 400-plus kids.
Yeah.
So, but that's, that's a whole other discussion, and again, it's an, until we know what the funded, funding portion of it, it's an unfunded mandate, so that's a whole other topic of discussion.
And to Andrew's point, and I think we had this discussion, I don't know if you recall it, in finance facilities, though, the electrical panel upgrades were going to include the ability to build on them up to, I think, 800, so that that is kept in, in all this with the upgrades, the additional room for expansion.
Yes, that'll be taken into consideration. And when I, when I talk about upgrades, you know, you know, building four classrooms, I said four classrooms in the town, one of the Township Schools, whether it's Washington or George, we were looking at property lines, so we're trying to see which is the best place and what would, could handle, you know, the expansion.
Mr. Rosato, thank you for putting this together. So I think, all right, next, I think we're all in agreement that the next step is to get the study, and then we move forward from there.
I do have a call out to the demograph, the demographer, to just see what it is. I haven't heard back from him yet, but I've been running around doing a couple other things, too, so...
Is it on this discussion?
Mr. Rosato, since we're going back to the demographer, we talked about, it wasn't this past finance meeting, but the one before, about potential cost of getting a revised demographic report, especially if we're looking into possible multi-year interaction. I assume that's going to cost more than the last one cost. Do you have a ballpark number of what the last one cost? Because I don't, I don't recall it off the top of my head.
No, that's what my call out to the demographer is.
It was a couple years ago, yeah.
Do we have any other items under old business? Any items?
Just for the, for the public's sake, though, we're talking about 24, 25 being the, the year we're going to get hit hard. Should we just review 22, 23, which is next school year, just to make sure that we don't, the takeaway from this discussion isn't, oh my God, we need four more classrooms in each town now? Just for the public's sake.
So I did mention earlier what Mr. Rosato has on the bottom, worst-case scenario, and you did say it was worst case. You could put art on a cart, it's an inexpensive scenario, but it gets you a quicker classroom than having to spend millions to build. It's an option for the next couple of years till we can figure this out.
And I know some of the schools are already combining those two into one room, like in Berkeley, it's already one combined room. It's also not optimal for that curriculum at all to have it pushed into a classroom, but we'll get into that discussion another time.
Mr. Snee?
With regards to Viviano, from what I understand, they could, if they start building, they will start filling the homes as they build them. In other words, if they build 10 homes, they fill 10 homes. So if they start building next spring, theoretically, we could have kids in our buildings by Christmas time. So, it's not, there's not going to be this onslaught potentially in 2024. We could have kids in our building as soon as next Christmas. All depends upon how quickly they build them, because from what I understand, from somebody on the planning committee, as soon as they build them, they will come. So, it could be a gradual thing where we have 20, I thought it was pretty good, where you could have blocks of 10 homes or 20 homes at a time. So I don't want everybody to think that it's just going to be all of a sudden this mass invasion. It's probably going to be more like a drip, drip, drip kind of thing. And I'm assuming the same thing would happen with Franklin if and when it's ever built.
Yeah, I think with the Franklin property, you'll have more at once, because that, I don't, that's going to be a one build, all in. So that one would probably be, you see the impact. The trickle-in effect, I agree with you on that. I'm just, well, I took the assumption that everyone comes in and it's just the impact at that time based on the demographic report, and that's when we anticipated that to become...
And the detail of this, as a, as a data geek, was, was great, all your different scenarios. Having done this multiple times in my life, I can't, cannot appreciate the level of attention that you put to, as far as keeping your 18 separate from your 20, separate from your 22, so, well done.
Thank you. It was fun.
Now you have it set, all you have to do is change the numbers when we're ready.
Right.
Having no other old business, we're going to move on to new business. Does anybody have any new business that they would like to discuss? Seeing nobody having anything under new business to discuss, would somebody please make a motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Do I have to thank you? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. Have a great night.